We should call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this Monday, November 1st, Thank you for coming tonight. Just a reminder, if you have your cellphone, make sure you mute it so that we don't disrupt anybody. But if it does go off and we hear it, we'll just pause and let you answer your phone. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, would you just have a moment of silence, please? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to make some changes to the agenda. Please remove the item 4B, Library Project. We won't be addressing that this evening. Under New Business, add 5B, and the title will be Airport Tax Reserve Fund. And under the Managers' Report, we're going to add 6B, the ARPA Funding Update. Any other additions to the agenda? Any other additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda and the amendment statute.
The motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended and the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make a change to the consent agenda, so I'm not sure I understand. Commissioner Sharp has just made that motion, but I'm sorry if I'm a little out of order.
Commissioner Sharp, would you just want to make the change to the agenda and then we'll go into the consent agenda?
Yes, to the regular agenda.
All right. Motion's been made to amend the agenda as, excuse me, amend the regular agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now moving to the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make two motions in order. First one would be that we amend the item 2J, October 18th Regular Meeting, as I submitted a change to that. I believe that was distributed by the clerk to all the members.
Any other agenda, changes to the consent agenda?
I had another change, but I wanted to make it as a different motion.
What change is that, sir?
I would like to change item 2H as amended, and I believe the clerk distributed those comments, and I believe that Dr. Crumpton also sent out an email about that.
I mean, could he elaborate on what, I mean, are we going to talk about this? What are you changing?
2H is the closed session minutes on the October 4th Closed Session, and 2J is the minutes from the October 18th Regular Meeting. Did everybody see the changes to the regular meeting?
If there needs to be discussion regarding the closed session minutes, I would recommend having a closed session to discuss those minutes.
Understand, so...
Would you like me to speak to the October 18th one?
Well, I have, okay, let's put the closed session off for the moment and discuss the regular 10-18 minutes.
Okay, that's, that one's pretty simple. Basically, what happened is that the clerk does a really good job of summarizing our meetings, but this particular meeting discussed the redistricting, and I felt it was necessary to include some more detail specifically about the redistricting. So I looked at the video and then summarized the comments that I made relative to how we use the Voting Rights Act to generate Plan F, and I would like to include those in the minutes, and I did that. I believe we sent out emails, didn't we, on those?
That's correct. They were sent out by email at the end of last week with the requested changes highlighted. The October 18th minutes, as provided by myself, and then as requested by Commissioner Carver, are both included in your agenda packets right now.
I've got a question regarding that. So what are we now doing? I understand if you have a particular word or a sentence that needs to be corrected, but to do a rewrite of what you say you intended to do versus what the clerk recorded bothers me. That's not making a lot of sense. That's almost as if you write the minutes yourself.
I can understand that. What I did do was sit down and look at the video, and all I did was essentially transcribe what I said during that session.
That's your interpretation of what you did. I want to know what the clerk wrote in compared to what you say you said.
And that's what she sent out on the email, but I understand that.
And I would add, I'd like the public to know, not just the emails that might have been sent out to us, I think the public's entitled to these minutes here, not the closed session, but definitely these minutes, the regular meeting minutes.
And what we could do, and this is just a suggestion on my part, is if there needs to be some additional discussion or further time to review these minutes, we could have these items tabled until the next meeting to allow that to happen.
In addition to, I would support that whole highly, but in addition to that, I want to see a face-up. Is interpretation your recording? And see how they match.
And that's currently in the electronic agenda packet. Mr. Carver's proposed amendments are highlighted in yellow in the agenda packet, and we can print those off as well.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you wish to withdraw your motion to table the discussion?
I understand we're tabling it until the next meeting. Is that correct?
That's...
I don't think that motion's been made.
The motion hasn't been made.
Yeah, to make...
I made the motion to make the amendment, so...
Would you withdraw that motion?
With the understanding that what we're going to do is table it until the next meeting.
That would be, that would be appreciated.
Okay. I withdraw the motion and understand, and I will make the motion to table the October 18th Review of the Regular Meeting Minutes until next meeting.
All right, so we're going to table the regular 10-18 minutes from the consent agenda?
We should probably table the October 4th Closed Session minutes as well.
Right.
So the board, everybody in the board can make sure they understand what's been written.
And I didn't see the highlighted yellow and all that, so I'd like to see what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Would you modify your motion to table as well the October 4th Closed Session minutes?
I'm fine with that. We'll table the October 4th Closed Session minutes until next meeting.
All right. Motion's been made to table the minutes from the October 4th Closed Session as well as the minutes from the October 18th Regular Meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda was approved as amended with the two items tabled. Thank you. Do we have public comments, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
No public comments. Moving on. Old business. Planning Board Recommendation Regarding a Zoning Map Amendment. Ms. Amy McNeil.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Regarding the application by Savannah Gray to rezone 1 2.24 acre tract of land off of Greenwood Road and Rockyfort Church Road, the Planning Board met on October 18th after the public hearing was held and recommended that the Commissioners approve the zoning map amendment as submitted by unanimous vote. Specific topics of discussion included the following: that the request is consistent with the Plan Sandley Adopted Long Range Plan; that single-family dwelling land use on a newly-created lot corresponds with the density recommendation of countryside; and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the site has access to public water; and the applicant has an approved SEPTIC evaluation from the Lee County Environmental Health Department. As a reminder, two votes are required for each rezoning request: one vote to approve a statement on long-range plan consistency, and one vote to either approve or deny the rezoning request. Staff has drafted sample motions for your use, or you're free to make your own motions. Are there any questions?
Any questions from Ms. McNeil? Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
A motion, yeah, motion one?
Which, which, which motion?
Oh, we got, yeah, we got it.
I think motion one is, motion one.
I withdraw my motion.
Oh, make a motion that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the, within the Plan Sandley Long Range Plan.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the redistricting as it is consistent with the Plan Sandley Long Range Plan designation of countryside because of the site located outside the urban service area, and the request would support the conservation and maintenance of a rural lifestyle with limited residential density. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion number two.
I make a motion that the Planning Board recommend the County Commissioners approve the proposed zoning map amendment because it's reasonable and in the public interest because the site is already in character with the proposed residential agricultural zoning district. It has access to public water and has approved SEPTIC evaluation on file with the Lee County Environmental Health Department.
And vote number two is to approve the zoning map amendment made by the Vice Chair. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. Under New Business, Lee County Government Website Redesign Migration and Implementation. Mr. Kyle has a guest attending from Michigan, lives in the neighborhood of where my father lives.
We do. Good evening, Chairman Smith, other members of the board. Tonight, as mentioned, we're presenting a website design migration, or redesign migration and implementation proposal. I do have Thomas Jean with us from Revise. He's come to visit with us from Michigan, as you mentioned. So I'm just going to get into a little bit of preliminary in the beginning, and then if you'll forgive us, part of this presentation's going to be a little bit interactive, so we'll move over to where the laptop is, and Thomas will take some of the controls. So just a little bit of how we got here. So our current website is truly an iteration of a website that we had in 2008. We put a little bit of a facelift on it around 2016-17, but it was not a functional enhancement. It basically was just a little bit of design change and a new look. So for the past year or two, the board, county manager, other staff have been more focused on the website, and it's, it being a core communication, collaboration, and marketing tool for the county. So our current website, while it is visually appealing, it lacks in some areas. One of the biggest complaints we have is the abilities for departments to update their information. This is because of the backend platform is an open-source platform, and there's just not a lot of flexibility in that. And then there's ease of access to commonly search things. We've heard some requests from citizens as well, that they've had some issues finding some things that they're looking for, and just overall, the design of the current website is dated. We need to be able to use it more as a tool, and right now, it's just lacking in those areas. So as far as RFP process, in September, we sent out an RFP for potential respondents. We sent that out directly to seven companies. We posted on the website for about a month and posted it in the Sanford Herald. We received nine responses. Those responses did vary greatly in price. IT staff, we took a look at the RFP, we took a look at the parameters we had out there, and we were able to narrow down those nine responses to four. We wanted to manage the ongoing cost as best we could. We wanted a good product up front, but we didn't want the ongoing cost to, to be too hard to manage over the long term. Two of these really didn't meet the specifications because they didn't include a full data migration in the RFP specification as we asked for. And then one of the four respondents was not really communicative with us. We reached out, and there just wasn't a good response. So Revise, we were really excited about their proposal, their capability. We wanted a partner that was very experienced, very motivated. Thomas and his team met those goals, and something also that was economically viable. So we wanted something that we could, that fit in the budget up front, but something we could manage long-term as well. So these are just a couple of the items that we looked for when we were evaluating their capability, their experience, you know, what did the breadth of their implementation look like in the government space? That was critical for us. Functionality, so, you know, what could they do for us as far as design? The content management system is key as well, so that's that system that I talked about earlier that is open source. When you go out to bid like this, you get a proprietary software system that's a lot more functional. And then the implementation process. We wanted something that's smooth, a company that would work well with us and with the team. Support, security, disaster recovery, analytics, we wanted all those things, cost again, near and long-term, service-level response times. We wanted a company that we could reach out to, that would be available, that would have a very experienced support staff. Training opportunities were critical as well. We need for our folks, as we have new people coming in, we need them to be able to reach out to Thomas and his team and get training that they need. They're also very proactive in their, in the life cycle of this relationship. They also put a very continual focus on the quality of the CMS to maintain technology as it moves and changes. And so we just saw a tremendous motivation from Revise from the very beginning, their experience, their capability, and you'll see a little bit later, that kind of in real time. And so these are some of the key things that we looked at when we were walking through these responses. So I'm going to turn it over to Thomas for now. He'll talk a little bit about Revise, and then we'll move into a little bit more of an interactive piece.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, my name is Thomas. I'm with Revise. We're headquartered up in Troy, Michigan. And first off, thank you for having me. It's a little bit colder up there right now, and anytime I can go south, I try to. So a little bit about us, we are, of course, Revise. We've now launched websites for roughly 2,500 municipalities and counties across the country, many here in North Carolina, which we'll, of course, show you some of those if we have some time here. Can't really see them all there, but a couple here just in the state, City of Ashboro, Edgcombe County, Hartford, or, excuse me, Hurtford County, City of New Bern, Rutherford County, Surrey County, and as I mentioned, we'll go through a couple of those. Some on the national level, we've got the City of Des Moines, Iowa, we've got Gatlinburg, Tennessee, Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, St. Petersburg, Florida, so we've got cities big and small, counties big and small, and we're hoping, of course, to add Lee County. Probably not going to be able to read all of that, but a couple highlights of us. Number one, we update our system about four times a year, so it's continually getting better. Those updates would come to the county automatically. You don't pay extra for them, they just constantly are coming. We also give you free retraining, so if there's any, anytime there's a new employee that comes on board, or an expansion of the department, we'll be able to train them for free and no extra cost to the county there. Couple kind of key features that we'll include in the website, this is not a full list, but of course, a calendar of events. Our calendars, you can basically have as many as you want. You can have calendars just for meetings, you can have community event calendars, if it's just a planning meeting, or it's a full county board meeting, it's, can be differentiated on that calendar. Also, we have what we call an e-notify system, so it would notify the public when new content is posted on the website via email and/or a text message, and they can sign up for that. It's very easy. Couple other quick things, facility reservations, so folks can reserve a gazebo or a public space if needed, online forums, automated newsletters, and we also have something called a public record request tracker, which allows folks to submit questions to the county, and you can respond and track that response via email, as well as text messages, too. Kind of already covered the company profile. Here are just a few screenshots of some of our sites, a couple that I mentioned earlier. And now I guess we'll open it up to questions. We can go and show you some, some stuff live on the laptop here if that's real time. That's always a good one. Okay. So of course, this is a county website today, so real quick, I just want to talk about the process. So if you were to move forward with us, we would actually come back here if you invited us again, and we do what we call a kickoff meeting. That kickoff meeting, we like to meet with the web committee that's been formed, and then also any departments that would like to meet with us. And the point of that is really just to get a wish list from each department on what they'd like to see in the new site, both for design, functionality, their content, everything. Then after that, a few weeks later, what we will provide to you is what you'll see next. Just give me one second to type in the URL here. There we go. So from there, we will actually, about two to three weeks later, we will send you a mockup of what we're proposing the website will look like. The look and feel of the website's totally customized to the county, so it's not a template, it's not a copy of another website, it's totally unique just for you folks. And we will send it in a similar format to what you'll see next, if I can spell it correctly. My apologies. There we go. So this is an example of a mockup we did for La Plata County, Colorado. This is like the Durango, Colorado area. And we'll send it over, and as I mentioned, it's totally customized and designed just for you. You get to review it, and you get to come back to us with any changes you want made. So it could be color, it could be style, you could say that you don't like how large these boxes are here, you could scroll down and say, get rid of the deer.
Oh, no.
Of course, it's your choice to make. I would say keep it, but it's up to you. And we do this both for the homepage and also every single department based on their needs. Now, some departments have more needs than others, and the way we'll find those is through the kickoff meeting process I mentioned a bit ago. We also will give you unlimited revisions to that mockup. Now typically, we do about three. Let's say that's probably average. There is a record with Revise, and that's 20. We're not going to try and beat that record, hopefully. Unfortunately, I was a project manager on that one as well, and by about number 12, I was no longer my happy chipper self I am today, so... But either way, it's just nice to know that we don't have to have you approve something that you're only 90% happy with. We want you to be entirely happy. So this is what they approved. As you can see, the colors changed a bit, those boxes we moved over to the right. We also added this featured video area here, and the deer survived, so everyone's happy. And as I mentioned, we do that for every department and, as well as the main homepage. After that, it's kind of a little bit more boring from there. We code out the website, we add in our content management system, we add in all of the content from the old site to the new, and we also help you retool it, because very likely, we're going to find some content on the old site that we don't want there.
The airport terminal comes to mind.
We will, I'll take a note of that, and we'll get right on that one. We then contact any staff for training. As I mentioned, we give you unlimited training, and then from there, you all get to decide when it goes live. Your current site will stay live until the new one is ready, so there won't be any downtime of that sort. And I will show you what this one actually looks like today. The site is now live, La Plata County, Colorado. And that's it today. There you go. Couple quick features I want to show you, and then I'll stop and open it up for questions. One is, if I could put this on every single website in America, I would, and that is what we call a curated search. So right now, most websites operate on a Google search or a Bing search. In our opinion, that's not the best way to do it, because Google has an algorithm that nobody totally understands, and you cannot manipulate any, anyway. So you're kind of subject to their whims, so to speak. So what we do instead is what we call a curated search, and that is basically the county will get to decide what comes up in the search. So if there's something that's very important in the county, and you want it to be number one on the search results, you get to decide that. So for example, I just typed in the word water here. In this case, the city has decided that this is the number one result when someone types in the word water. You can also switch it at any time, so if you want to make this third result number one, the county will be able to do that, so you have full control over it. The reason this is very important is that probably 5% of the content on your site right now is getting 90% of the traffic or more, give or take. This is a great way to actually focus folks in on that content that they're actually looking for, and not, say, a meeting agenda from 15 years ago, which maybe needs to be on the website, but probably isn't the number one thing folks are looking for, so... With that, I'll just go ahead and pull up a couple sites here in the state of North Carolina, if that's okay. I'm going to try and spell them correctly again. So this is, of course, the City of Ashboro. This one went live maybe about two years or so ago. As you can see, we kind of took the branding from their logo that they already had and expanded it across the site. I've got too many pages open here, so it's loading a bit slow. So the City of Ashboro. Another one I really like is the City of New Bern on the east side of the state. This one actually incorporates a video. It's like a drone shot of the city, and so we can do this for you, of course, as well. And then the last one I'll show would just be Rutherford County. Got the right one. I believe there's a couple Rutherford Counties across the country, so I'm glad this one came up first. So that's Rutherford County. And of course, we'll have links in the packet, I believe, to all of these sites or most of these, but we can send you them after the meeting as well. So I could talk for another two hours, but I don't want to subject you to that, so I'll go ahead and stop and open it up for any questions you might have.
Questions for Tom, Kyle?
Oh, I like what I see. Hope you can deliver.
I noticed on one of the sites that you actually had, what, Korean, Chinese, Japanese? Will this be bilingual?
Yes, sir, it will be. And we can also call out, like, the top languages spoken in the county. So here on this site, these were the top five, but then also, if you click this little orange button here, you can select all these other ones as well.
I'm not kidding.
And I'll just, let's just try Spanish here.
How much will that cost?
That's all, that's all included. Everything I showed you today is all included. Now, it is automated, so it's a little bit, we're not doing a ton of legwork in that case, but yes, it'll, it'll be included for you.
One of the other really positive things that Revise offers during the design phase, they, they kind of expect us to... they kind of expect us to come up with something that nobody had thought about yet, and so that, a couple of those are already built in to the proposal as well.
Any other questions? Commissioner Carver?
Nope.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner LaValle?
No, just the comment that I think the search bar is a very good feature.
Yes, agreed.
I find myself sometimes navigating the website, there's challenges of trying to find things, so I think having that would be a huge help.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Would you, your department would handle all the local user concerns and questions?
Yes, yes, between us and the communication department, yes, sir.
All right.
Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
I do like the drone appearance, so we do have a drone in the county.
We do, yes.
Yes, we do.
That'd be a nice.
We can employ them.
The emergency management department would love to fly whenever we want them to fly.
Feature, feature all the sites, if you haven't been watching the Sega, well Sega puts on some drones from the Enterprise Park, and that's pretty incredible. So if we can do that with our sites around the county, that would be awesome.
Yes, sir.
Little action shot with the mountain bike trails.
Agreed. And it looks, it looks great in, you know, in action live up there, the way that all works out, so be excited to see it as well.
Everybody in agreement on that, the visual is audio?
Oh, yeah.
Or a video, that is? That's, that's high speed.
It is.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion? Motion's been made to authorize the county manager to approve purchase order and business agreement associated with the scope of work from Revise on the county's website redesign, migration, and implementation. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
And I'm, I'm serious about that airport terminal.
Yes, we need the new building.
We need the new building.
We need the new building, not the old one.
Of course, you can get a flyover of that.
Yes, sir. Get a flyover, that's pretty impressive.
Next item on the agenda is a request for funding from the Airport Tax Reserve Fund by the Sanford Lee County, Sanford Lee County Regional Airport Authority.
Good afternoon, good evening, I guess I should say. We have received a request from the Sanford Lee County Regional Airport Authority requesting an additional $330,000 from the Airport Tax Reserve Fund. They are, will be using the funds as a local match to a state grant of $4.7 million to make improvements to the south terminal area. They will be using an additional 220,000 funds they have on hand to complete this match. The improvements include additional taxiways and side improvements for additional hangar space. There is currently $396,260 in the fund, and we are projecting an additional 140,000 will be collected by January 6th, 2022. That would leave us a little over $200,000 after, at the end of this fiscal year, if all goes well.
Any questions of Lisa?
Mr. Chairman, I need to notify the board again that I do sit on this authority and I am a voting member and did vote for this resolution that they sent to you.
You say you did or didn't?
I did. Yes, it was unanimous, though.
And the request has also been sent to the city council since it's happening during the year there to notify them also based on the agreement we have for that reserve fund.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Would you approve?
Motion's been made to approve the Sanford Lee County Regional Airport Authority's request to the Board of Commissioners, request an additional $330,000 from the Airport Tax Reserve Fund. The authority will use the funds as a local match of the state grant of 4.7 million to make improvements to the south terminal area. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the manager's report, update on the multi-sports complex.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I needed to communicate to the board that on October 20th, we finally closed on the multi-sports complex property with Pose and Stewart's, and we now own the 110 acres, 110 acres there at Highway 42 in the bypass. So now that the land is acquired, the next step for the board would be to determine when they want to hire the architect, engineer to begin designing the facility based on timing. Staff is recommending that we go ahead and do that for several reasons. Number one, the RFQ needs to get out and will take some time to develop that, and then it'll take some time to evaluate the responses. And then there are some issues with the site that may take a little bit of time to work out before we can actually start construction, one being the wetlands that are on the site, and two is the access to Highway 42 from the site. So we have to get DOT permits and that kind of thing, and that might, might take a little bit of time, so. We had discussed previously with the board, the financial plan for the library, community college projects, and the multi-sports complex, and with the one penny that the board put in the capital reserve this year, we feel very good about moving forward with all the projects and can do so without a tax rate increase to bring that debt onboard over the next two years. So we're asking for approval from the board to do the RFQ, start the RFQ process.
Any questions of the manager?
I'm over to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the motion to direct the staff to develop a request for qualifications, seek responses, and then make recommendations award to the county commissioner for design of a multi-sports complex on property the county now owns off of Broadway Road in Sanford, North Carolina. All those, any further discussion?
How soon can we engage DOT for the permits that we may need? We've got a good district representative on the board.
As soon as, as soon as we sign a contract with the architect, engineer, that's probably the first thing that they need to do is get that driveway permit connection there, so. I would say probably 120 to 180 days.
All right, thank you.
Motion's been made, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to the ARP money, I need to discuss with the board our visit to Magnetti Morelli on Friday.
Yes, sir.
Just to give you an update on where we are with that. Morelli is quickly moving to move out of the building. They have stopped operations as of September 30th, and so now they're busily trying to empty the facility. We do have some concerns with what they're doing right now, and that's why we spent two and a half hours at the facility on Friday morning. There are some things that they have surplus and advertised online that we believe are fixtures to the site, and we're working through our attorneys and their attorneys to get that rectified before next week's auction that there will be finalized. In the meantime, there are some things in the building that the community college and the county have identified that we may need to bid on to keep in the facility that are not fixtures, such as overhead cranes and some other equipment that the community college would like to keep for training purposes. So the auction is next week, and we've identified some items and believe that the board needs to give us approval to authorize us to spend $100,000 out of the capital project fund on items that we want to purchase and that are not sold at, at auction, but we get to keep. So I know that wasn't an item on the agenda, but as our attorneys will verify, this item is moving very quickly as they are trying to exit the facility, and we are having issues with communications with the company because most of their higher up people at the facility are gone. And so we're dealing with in-betweens between these folks and people in their home office in Detroit who probably haven't been in the plant in months, so. We're just trying to protect the interests of the community college and ourselves in this, so. You know, we feel the $100,000 will at least get us to keep the cranes and hopefully some of the, of the other equipment.
Will you be overseeing the purchase of anything that you made?
Yes, sir. And I'll be working with Santiago and Jennifer together to, to work through that. We kind of have a tag team going on, as we discussed this morning, as we were reviewing our trip from Friday, we had, we had, we broke up into two groups, there was so much area to cover that we had to break up in groups. The facility, the, the visits that we had been getting from Magnetti obviously did not show us the entire facility, we got shown the entire facility on Friday. I didn't even know they had a basement until Friday. They have a basement and it's huge and has some water in it, so we know we've got a project there to, to work through. But we, they didn't let us go into their R and D area before, I probably know why now because it was R and D, you know, so they, they consider that trade secrets, didn't want us in there, but everything is gone from in there except a couple of pieces of equipment that they're probably going to leave for the college, so. It's, it's a huge undertaking and it takes more than one person to go through that building, and we plan on going back through the building again before the auction, and then after the auction, we plan on taking the community college staff back through to tell Morelli, you know, what didn't, you know, see what didn't sell, what they want to keep, and what we're going to ask Morelli to make sure they remove from the property before December 31st. And it is their intent to, to vacate the building December 31st, so. I'm hoping that at some point between now and December 31st, we can schedule a time where the commissioners and the board of trustees can get to go through the building because I think it's important at this point that everybody understand what we're, what we've purchased and what it's going to take to put that building in place as a, as a classroom facility. But it is a, it's a, it's a huge facility, and so it should set the community college up for years, but I'm just seeking that approval for the 100,000 because that's over my limit of 30,000, and we will, we will spend it wisely, and Ms. Mentor will be hovering over us as we do it.
Will those funds eventually be charged against the 12 million cap on the thing?
We would like to, yes, sir. We would like to, you know, along with the purchase of the 7.4 million, we plan on, you know, paying the, you know, paying that 7.4 million dollar loan off with the 12 million, and then whatever we have to do to clean the facility, bring the, the environmental issue into compliance, and, and whatever we need to purchase, you know, here at the end to, to protect the community college interest, yes, sir, we plan on charging that to the loan.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lovick?
Just a comment, that's probably wise money, because if you have to go back and buy those same items and have it set up, it's way cheaper to, if we can keep it in place,
It also will, you know, prevent us from having to, in some instances, go back to Morelli and tell us they need to fix something that was damaged when something got removed. So it's in our interest to protect the facility, you know, I can't see leaving, you know, taking those cranes down, what, what effort that would take.
Are they responsible for cleaning up afterwards, or is that going to be something counties?
We, we were discussing that this morning, we, you know, we would hope that they would clean the facility before they left, but I don't, I don't know that they have to. So we probably are in, in for doing an industrial cleaning inside the facility.
Commissioner Reeves, questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I'm good as well.
Commissioner LaValle?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thanks, sir.
Any other comments, Mr. Carver? Do I hear a motion to give the chair, excuse me, the manager permission?
So moved.
Motion's been made to give the manager permission to purchase items up to a limit of $100,000 from the Magnetti Marielli property. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Mentor is back again.
Yes, and that would my favorite topic. There is, there's some, not, some sarcasm in that. I would like to come back to you and give you another update on the ARPA coronavirus local fund, local physical recovery funds. Your county attorney and I have sat through six glorious days of ARPA information through the UNC School of Government this month, and we've learned a lot. I can honestly say I now kind of understand the proverbial getting the cart before the horse, because that is truly after sitting through this six days of class where I feel like we are, that we got money before all the rules were set and still aren't set, so we are trying to work our way through this, so. If you'll be there with us, you'll probably hear some repeats from what I've told you before about the funding, but I wanted to just kind of review some things with you and then share some new stuff that we've learned. Again, the funding that we've received is part of the American Rescue Plan Act, which was 1.9 trillion dollars in total funding. As you'll see in section one, there's 350 billion of that, that's coronavirus state and local physical recovery funds, that is where our money has come from. But I wanted to share this slide with you so that you could see that there is lots of other money out there for other organizations, just for you to think about as we try to decide where you want to spend your 11, almost 12 million dollars, so, just to keep that in mind, that, you know, there is money going straight to education, there is money going to health, that's an interesting thing to me, they keep saying we can use it for clinics and things, well, the health department is getting money from other sources for those things, so we earn, right now, we don't see the need to put part of the money towards that. You may want to put a reserve back for later on down the road in case other funds dry up for the health department, but that is, you know, something you consider, you can consider. Just a reminder of the funding levels, Lee County is receiving 11,999,847. The city of Sanford is receiving 9,588,012. Broadway is receiving 409,845. Funds may cover costs from March 3rd, 2021 to December 31st, 2026. However, all funds must be obligated or encumbered by December 31st, 2024. The biggest thing?
24 or 26?
That has to be encumbered by December 31st, 2024, we have till 2026 to spend it, so in other words, we could have contracts outstanding at December 31st, 2024, and you have till 2026 to spend that money on those contracts.
Got it, thank you.
There are lots, and I do mean lots, of compliance strings attached to this, and we still don't know all of them, we are still operating under the final interim rule, we don't have the final rule yet, and after hearing comments this morning in one of the ARPA calls, we don't know when we're going to get that information. They're supposed to be getting together on this fall, but I think they got a lot of comments, a lot more than they anticipated, and I truly think this is bigger than the Treasury's office realized it was going to be. They have already delayed the first, the first full reporting deadline because I think they got overwhelmed by the initial amount of information that had to be submitted and it blew up their system. So we are just, we're in a major state of limbo, so as I said, we are still waiting on the final rule to be issued. Again, just a reminder of what the federal objectives of the recovery funds are, they are one, to address pandemic public health issues, address negative economic impacts of the pandemic, this is the one that we do not fall into, compensate for lost local government revenue growth, that's at this time. There are four times you can review this, but I don't see us turning around to the negative, I hope it doesn't happen during the next four years, or three years. Aid for low-income areas and populations, and longer-term investments in critical infrastructure, water, wastewater, stormwater, and our broadband. This is just a schedule, or examples of some allowable projects, and you'll notice broadband, expansion, and internet access are on there, but right now, we do not have state approval as a county to do that, so we're still waiting on that. But you can see there are health clinics, various examples, food assistance, job training... But you can see there are health clinics, various examples, food assistance, job training, mental health treatment, community health workers, educational support, of course, water and sewer infrastructure, PPE can be purchased with it. There's lots of different things. It's just a matter of how you can go about doing those. So, some important things I would like for us to keep in mind as we move ahead with this is that we, the county manager did sign off on the basic award terms and conditions and those include that we will follow the U.S. Treasury guidelines, guidance on expendable, eligible expenditures, that we will have to comply with most provisions of the uniform guidance. We will retain all documentation and other records in accessible format for five years after the end of the award term and that will be documented compliance with civil rights laws. That compliance with the uniform guidance is a major concern and where we're running into some issues on some ideas we had had that are causing some problems with some of the projects that we would like to have asked you to consider. So, we'll be monitoring that to see if any of those rules change and I'll go over a little bit more of that as we move through this. So, these funds are public funds and so one thing that's been stressed to us is that we have to make sure that any project we consider is eligible and authorized by not only the ARPA rules, but also state law authority. So, there are some things that are listed, just like the broadband is authorized by the feds, but we don't have state law authority to do that yet. Okay? And then in addition, a local government must follow both federal and state compliance requirements. So, we have to live in that darker gray area there and that's where some of this is coming into play. So, one thing we have to remember too is that we have to contract with, we cannot donate to any organization. We can, they contract with an organization, private entity or a nonprofit, things like that, to undertake a program or activity that local government has statutory authority to perform. We cannot do like we did with CARES Act money and just give it to a nonprofit. We have to sign a contract for them to provide a service to us, the same way we do at the budget year. We have individual contracts for every nonprofit we do. We have to make sure that the service that we're contracting with them is something that we can do as a county. So, just a couple of examples there, we can contract with a contractor to construct a building. We can contract with a vendor to provide goods and supplies. We can contract with a nonprofit to undertake a community assistance program or we could contract with a private association to manage products, projects and business improvement districts.
I've got a question there.
Yes.
In that case, is it permissible for us to require recipients to have bonded individuals handling the money?
I'll yield to the fighting. Assistant county manager.
I will have to look into that specifically to see if we can add on to specifications. As you'll see here shortly, they have to, any organization that we contract with, they qualify as a subrecipient, has to follow the exact same rules that we would follow in spending the money. Now, by state law, I have to be bonded.
Right.
You all know that. And then our employees have to be bonded. So, we would have to look to make sure if the uniform guidance speaks specifically to bonding. I have not had a chance to delve into it to that depth, so, but we will look into that because that is a concern. Okay. Just a note here, a local government may partner with and transfer funds to another government entity or a private entity to carry out an ARPA physical recovery fund eligible project. The other entity will be a subrecipient for purposes of the uniform guidance. And what's important there is that you need to understand that subrecipient must provide appropriate progress reports and financial reports to us. They have to be accountable to the local government for how it uses the federal funds provided under the subaward. They have to follow applicable federal rules regarding financial management, internal controls, cost principles and audit requirements. And they have to collect and provide financial and performance data for the recipient to include in its reports to the local government. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a lot to handle. It's a lot for us to handle and we will be tasked with monitoring them. So, we cannot just turn the money over and say, oh, give me a report at the end of the year. We have to, we, as a county, we'll have to monitor it.
And that's one of the reasons why we're hiring a head honcho to run that.
Yes, we hope. Okay, a couple of other things to consider, all funds will be subject to the yellow book and single audit requirements for us at the level we're receiving funds. Restrictions follow funds, so units must engage in subrecipient monitoring, as I mentioned. There will be federal government, the federal government can call back funds that are misspent. Funds received by units is up to, or it's up to them to spend appropriately. Before I go on to the next steps, they talk about, you've heard me mention the uniform guidance. That is pretty much the federal's government's purchasing policies. Some cases they match up to state law, some cases they are more restrictive. There are also restrictions on what we can and cannot do with property. So, we cannot use the physical recovery funds on a piece of property that we intend to encumber with a loan. So, that is affecting some of the projects we had had in mind because if we had talked about potentially adding on a board chambers to the library, it was something we were considering, or thought about bringing to you. Well, the library will be collateral for the limited obligation bonds. So, then we thought, well, can we use it, maybe some of it at Morelli to help because it's workforce development? Well, the odds are that building is going to end up being collateral for the limited obligations on that building. So, we're just running into several different things that we're finding out now. There are also uniform guidance, if you're spending money on a piece of equipment or a project in excess of five thousand dollars. Uniform guidance says it has to be approved by the federal organization. Well, the U.S. Treasury is saying they're not going to pre-approve projects. So, the first couple of days of class, Whitney and I were like, okay. The impression was from the people teaching that they're saying they're not going to pre-approve meant you didn't have to worry about it. So, we were like, okay. Then lo and behold, Tyler Mulligan came up and said, whoa, you might want to wait until the final rules come out before you start projects or anything over, equipment over five thousand dollars. So, we're like, you know, you just feel like you just throw the pot up and see where it falls. So, so just to make you aware, you know, we're trying to get a good basis on it, but it is confusing and there's a lot of stuff going on still. So, next steps, we are currently recruiting for recovery funds manager. We did not get the number of applications I had hoped. I have narrowed it down. I think there's either four or five we're interviewing right now. We kind of added one the other day, so I think I'm up to four for sure, maybe five. We are going to have to review our current policies and procedures, determine what changes need to be made or what additional policies the board will need to adopt to comply with uniform guidance rules. We do have the basics built into our procurement policy, but this level of money and stuff, we've got to go beyond that and make sure there's, we have all of our procedures. We'll have to adopt a subrecipient, a subaward policy that lays out all of our conditions on selecting subawards and how we'll monitor those and everything. The school government is working on trying to compile samples for us and I am forever grateful that we have the school government. These states that don't have an organization like that, heaven help them, is all I can say because this is quite overwhelming. I would suggest to you, as we move forward, that we consider a joint meeting with the city and our town of Broadway to discuss potential uses of the funds, just to see if there's potential joint projects that can be done and mainly prevent duplication of projects. You know, my opinion is if you, we need to maximize the use of these funds and we don't need to duplicate efforts if we can avoid that. So, I would love, like for the board to consider that as we move ahead. And I think, yeah, after we get some information there, it would help guide us in some other areas we may need to do. I would also ask that you schedule a session during your board retreat for the physical recovery funding discussion where we hopefully can maybe get more specific on some projects that you have in mind or would like to suggest or for us to look into so that hopefully by January, we'll have the position filled and they will have had time to hopefully review all the videos from the six days of classes that we took and delve into this and be able to help us start vetting some projects and watch we get some ideas from you guys. Another piece of this is community engagement. We need to know if you as a board want to see community input, the size that we are, we do not have, I just want to make it clear, we do not have to see community input or there's no restrictions on what level of community input. But if you choose to do that, we would just, you know, we need to, some guidance from you as to whether or not you want to and what you think that will be like. Do you want it before you have the session at the retreat? Where you, maybe have a special session of the board or a public hearing at one of your board meetings between now and then to have the public come and speak to you as to what you want done with these funds? Do you want to, or do you want to wait until after you have the retreat and you've established a list of proposed projects and then get the community's input on that list or a combination? If you do the joint meeting with the city, I have seen where some places have done interactive surveys during the meeting. I have talked to Kyle to see if there's a way we could do something like that. If everybody brings their cell phones, we can, via text, have, do an interactive survey on the spot, just to kind of get a feel from you guys. And you may even want to include SAGA and I know they don't have funding directly through this, but they may be another organization that you want to bring in to get input from, just as a thought to you.
On that note, Lynn, just to add community input, you've given us quite a bit of information of which we don't have everything.
Right.
So, it would be counterproductive to have community input when citizens are presenting something that's not allowed or won't be authorized, so.
And that's one of the issues they brought up about community input and community engagement is are people not bringing forward ideas that they can't, we can't even do? And then you find that they're upset because you don't do what they suggested. So, that is a concern. So, I'm glad you brought that up.
And there was a whole session on that in the class. So, I mean, we're not the, all communities are faced with that same issue is how do you get the community involved, but yet setting expectations because like Lisa said, there's so many strings that are attached that, you know, we even are running into.
That would be my only concern. Would love to have input. It's just that if you're giving us a lot of input that really we can't do anything with and then you upset people who think that's a great thing and maybe, maybe getting the parameters, maybe getting our viewpoints from the city, the county, the town of Broadway, the Sanford Area Growth Alliance, the Chamber of Commerce, maybe those entities, the nonprofits that are in the community, bringing together suggestions, working from the list that are authorized and then present that to the community for, that would be the best way to do it.
The one thing you don't have to worry about is getting input from the community.
Oh, no.
You're going to get it, but you just don't formalize it, that's all.
So, I tend to agree with you that I would probably, like you said, try to get some of the major players together, like I said, with a joint meeting, get some ideas going, give us a chance to vet those and then maybe with the suggested list, go to the community and get the community involved at that point. If that's, if that's what the board wants to do, that's the way we'll lead towards this. Just a, I'm sorry, just a reminder again.
That would be our guidance. Any, any conflict with that?
The only thing I'd like to add is that it is complicated. I understand that. It's also, I think a number of municipalities and counties have already gone out and asked for input from the community and they got some good, good information. And the way they prefaced it was some primers on exactly what they understood, where the kind of, of ways they could spend the money, et cetera. In other words, they just didn't ask, you know, any Joe on the street. They tried to entertain the idea that they would try to educate people so that they can make good input. And apparently that's worked pretty well for a number of different places. So, I would, I would like to think that to some degree, we have the responsibility of making sure we get people the information they need so that they can think through the projects the same as we, to some degree, and make the input that they, that they'd like to do. I think that would, that would sell pretty well in the community.
When's our new website going to be up?
And there are.
Will the, will the department heads from each one of the local governments be a part of that community involvement?
If you so choose to have them, yes, we will. I figured we would have a discussion.
I would think that would make sense to see what type of joint projects we could find before we started opening the gates for other things.
Speaking of joint projects, I know that Broadway definitely needs to expand their water treatment plant and that four hundred thousand dollars is a mere pittance.
Right.
So, there's definitely an opportunity to, a joint project with that.
I think that should be our first obligation is to look within the departments and see where we can find some common ground and work together.
There are a lot of local, a lot of counties and cities who do have a dedicated page on their website to this. That's where I pulled some of the information that I've pulled and where we've referenced several things as we went, we've gone through the class. You know, there are a couple of communities where I've found they have already put a proposal out for nonprofits and other organizations to submit programs to the government for funding. And then of course, somebody's got to go through those and vet them all to see which ones meet the qualifications and make sure that that nonprofit can meet the subrecipients. Of course, we've got to develop, if we're going to go that route, we've got to develop our subaward policy before we can do that. So, I mean, there is, there is a level of having to get information out and there are various ways we can do that. We will be working, if that's the way the board chooses to go as we can move through this, we'll be working closely with Haley, the new position. Haley will probably be working closely together to try to get that information out, volunteer and stuff. So, again, some consideration for uses of funds would be the, you received the letter from S3 Housing Connect with some ideas on April 20th of this year and that was in your last agenda package. I did not provide it again. We have talked about a potential board chambers to allow for social distancing. Again, we have to rethink that as to where and how it can be done. One thing we can appear to do is air conditioning in addition to the Bob Hales facility. That meets several different requests. It is a QCT, Qualified Census Tract, in addition to the fact that it's dealing with ventilation in a facility. Pool work at Horton Park because it's in a QCT and the citizens that would probably be using that park would be beneficial there. Potentially the bathhouse at OT Sloan Pool. Phase two of Temple Park improvements and phase two of the OT Sloan Park improvements, all those are in areas of a QCT and are easier to justify the project because of that. Broadband, depending on state legis, legis.
State legislation.
You know what I mean? Thank you. Action. Review strategic, and we can also review the strategic plan for ideas. I did have a conversation with Mr. Edwards today and we don't have a lot of areas that are below the minimum for the broadband in Lee County. So, that will be a challenge because of where they are and how far apart they are. It's, it would be a hard thing to manage and figure out. And then you can use the funds to match other grants. And then I've also provided you tonight another list of items that you can be looking at. There is a list that NACO had put together that shows you the eligible categories and then some examples of allowable projects. Again, we have to remember that we have to be within state authority and we have to consider, you know, who can run the programs and make sure that they meet the needs or that we have the ability to do it and, you know, buildings can't, you know, like I said, major projects can't be encumbered. If we were doing geo-dead on some of these projects, it would not be a problem because the facilities would not be the collateral because of where they are. So, again, so we pretty much agree that we want to wait a while to do the community engagement until we have a better idea of where we're going. Okay? Thank you.
I think so. And the other thing is also, you know, have information ready for some of these people because there may be another category that they're receiving funds from.
Right.
We don't, you know.
Or that funds can be made available to them. I think that's one thing we have to remember is we want to make the most use of our money. So, if our money can go to one thing that nobody, none of the other sources can go to, but they can hit one of those pots, we need to direct them to that and then use our monies for other things that there is no other source for and stuff.
You made a comment about the health area.
Yes, sir.
Did you mean to include premium pay in that or is that something that you were willing to talk about?
I personally have not pursued premium pay because of all the restrictions on it because. Because, to me, every one of our employees is important and everyone contributed during this process. However, based on the rules and how they fall, not every employee would be able to get a premium. So I have not pursued that at this point in time. Now, with the board's direction, if you so choose and want to come up with a premium pay plan, we will work towards that. But, you know, we sent people home to work that was still, in my point, considered essential personnel. But if they were not on site working a certain amount of time, they do not qualify. We also sent people home to work because of the work going on in the government center, which would possibly take essential personnel and exempt them from being able to receive premium pay even though they were working and doing that essential function. So I just, you know, have not looked into premium pay.
Well, and those folks didn't have a choice in the matter.
Correct, that's, that's my concern.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go, you go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess my point is that it should still be included in the process by which we look at where we could possibly spend our money. And I understand it might be a little bit dicey, we have to work through it.
Right.
To just not pay attention to it seems like maybe that's an oversight, too.
Understand, I am paying attention to it. I just have not made it a top priority. But the board, the board makes the final decision on this, and that is something that we will consider. And if the board directs us to go that route, we will, we will come up with a plan. Or bring a plan to you then, see if you approve it.
I think it would be a good thing to let the board know who would actually, or what departments would actually, or could qualify for the premium pay. That way they would at least know the, the parameters for who would, who could, who could get it, and that way they would know who wouldn't get it, and it would make that decision. I know there's some, some discussions going on at school boards and that kind of stuff to, to increase pay and produce bonuses and that kind of stuff. But they're using a different pot of money where they have a lot more flexibility than, and we didn't get that pot of money. So, you know, we would have to come up with something different. And it may, we may have to, you know, to make it equitable, may have to use some of our own funds to do it, to, to make sure we compensate everybody equally. But, you know, if the board wants to take a look at it, we'll take a look at it. And I'll go over it with Ms. Mentor and Ms. McGee, and we'll let you all take a look at it and see who qualifies and who doesn't.
Off the top, I can tell you, health department employees would qualify. Emergency management, potentially the sheriff's department, the ones who work clinics. Varying levels, at one point, social services people were considered. I need to go back and look under these rules if they are considered. Under the state rules with the CARES Act money, they were considered essential. But there are, there are also rules that they have to have been on site, working so many hours during the timeframe, and several other things. But those are the departments off the top that I can remember, and I don't have my notebook, my full slides with me, I can tell you.
The only other thing I was thinking of is that there are some nonprofits that have a familiarity with some of the rules for compliance. And I was wondering if we could possibly identify them that you may have more confidence in, and that may make the, the horizon look a little bit more positive. People like OMI possibly in Brick City, et cetera, people that do these things. I know it's a lower level, and I know it's difficult.
I honestly, off the top of my head, you know, we don't have copies of their policies and procedures, and we would have to request those.
Right.
To make sure that they have everything in place. And all, to make, you know, just to make sure. And I think on some of the bids that I've seen or requests for proposals I've seen, they've asked for specific information and stuff, so we would have to put something together similar to that.
We, we definitely have to do our due diligence, I know. It's just that start digging at, at a place where you might hit feet or is not such a bad idea either. Got it? Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a request. I noticed that Wake County elected to set aside a pot of money for nonprofits. I think it was like 16 million, and then they set aside a separate pot for the QCT targeted zones for additional funding. I'd actually like to know how they came to that conclusion. How it works. It's not urgent.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from Lynn, Lisa?
Are you going to get all those down?
I, hoping that we get the position filled and that they are a quick learner and a quick study that they can dig into this. I will tell you, it's going to be a job and it, you know, I'm not seeing, hearing and seeing some of what I've heard. If we do a lot of nonprofits and we have to do a lot of sub monitoring or sub recipient monitoring, we may be coming back to you to tell you we need another person. Just because it is overwhelming to think of having to go out and, you know, check this behind every organization. And basically, we're going to have to be auditors and stuff. So I'm not sure that is, one person can handle it all, but we'll monitor that as we go along and we'll come back to you as we see fit and all. But, you know, we're, we're just trying to work our way through it and gain the knowledge on it, but we are, and Whitney and I will be, both have said, we will be watching these videos over and over again once they post them because there's lots of innuendos, you know, when I've gone back and looked through the notes from the PowerPoints just in doing this, yeah, I'm like, wish I could go ahead and pull that video back up and look at what they said one more time, just, just to see, again, the overlap of uniform guidance with our current state rules and some things we can and cannot do, you know, that impact us. So it is a wonderful pot of money, but it's going to be a very time-consuming pot of money to spend.
And could be very costly to administer. I would tell you, once you release that money, nonprofits are not the only ones. Department heads can get off scelted. I would recommend we strongly consider making sure that people are prepared to be recipients and accountable. That's why I mentioned the fact that they ought to be bonded. Because if I'm not mistaken, the liability comes back to the county for any misuse that can be accounted for.
It should be, it should be on their shoulders to know their rules, too. No, you're right. Not that our person that we employ has to constantly teach them along the way.
I'm sorry.
Is, is it true that they authorize you to spend up to 15%, something like that for administration in these things? So 15% of $12 million is a nice chunk of change. Also, the person that you're hiring, are they going to be involved primarily just in the detail of the reporting, or can they help us in this process of making choices? Will they be educated in, in this science stuff?
Yeah, well, they'll be, you know, we'll have them go back through the School of Government classes. Now, you know, I'm also looking for somebody who's got an accounting background or a business and administration background. And, you know, one of my biggest things is I need somebody who can, has a method or experience in reading through policy and being able to follow that policy. Not somebody that you just have to say, here, this is, these are the rules. I need them to be able to, this person to be able to go and read this and know the rules. That's what, you know, I am looking for, somebody that can help us through this process. So that, you know, my goal is that they'll be the one up here doing the next round of presentations to you and helping you make the decisions, and I'm in the background just kind of overseeing and stuff. So yes, that is my goal.
I hope the School of Government is graduating a bunch of these people. There are a lot of people that need them.
We're hunting them.
There were not. I will tell you, the applicant pool was slim. But there's also a lot of people, hiring people like this. Wake County was looking for one. Town of Mooresville just hired one of our previous interns as one, away from Wake County. Winston Salem I know has their position filled. They hired an intern from the School of Government. I have sent an email to the gentleman at the School of Government. I have not heard anything back about any other interns. But, you know, we're going to see what we got in the applicant pool and see how they interview, and we want to make the best choice and make sure we get somebody who can help us get through this process.
A long time ago, somebody asked me whether or not I wanted to be rich or not, and they said, don't forget the obligation that comes with the money, right?
That's it, you know, and we just, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way so that there's no ramifications down the road. You know, when they do get around to auditing these funds somewhere after 2026. Of course, they'll be audited each year as we go through our regular single audit. We will have to go out to bid for our auditors, our request for proposals from audit this year. We cannot just simply extend our contract because there's certain language that has to be involved because of these funds. So I will be coming before you with a request for our auditors this year. Haven't put that news to our auditors yet. So there are lots of impacts. It's, it's great to have the money, but we just have to be mindful and make sure we spend it and that all the organizations that we make fund with it or contract with, with it do spend it correctly also.
Dr. Crumpton? I would, I would suggest the city leadership, town of Broadway, state of leadership, Chamber of Commerce leadership, that we get a joint meeting together.
Mr. Randolph is putting together the all-boards meeting and looking at a date in January for the all-boards meeting. So we will all be together in January. So I will ask him to add an ARP discussion to the agenda.
Give us a couple hours.
You didn't seem to think I talked too long.
It could end up being the entire meeting after he gives his report, so.
I'm assuming you mean the topic is that worthy? It's not that I talk too much.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I was joking. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your consideration of that. And I assume you are okay with us putting a portion of this on the work session?
Yes.
For your reward or training?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything under the else, under the managers?
This Friday at 3:00 at Horton Park, we have our next ribbon cutting. Sorry that we had to cancel it from last Wednesday, but, you know, there was the threat of, you know, bad weather rolling in, and we decided not to mess with the weather. And it, it didn't come in right at 3:00 when, when the ribbon cutting would have started, but it started at 4:00. So we would have had a, a bunch of people on the playground, a lot of people out there when the rain came, so. Glad we changed it. Friday's weather's looking very good. Hopefully, everybody can make it out there. And Commissioner Carver and myself and Haley and Jennifer attended the SAGA Public Policy Meeting today on the tourism item that we met with Wendy last week, Mr. Chairman. And I thought it was a very good meeting, and she did a very good job with her presentation. Had a good meal, too. That's all for my, my discussion, sir.
Next item on the agenda is commissioners' comments. Commissioner Lovick?
I am good, brother, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Good luck, Lisa.
Get on. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I would just like to give a shout out to our Lee County football team as they finished first in the 3A portion of a split conference and got the number five seed in the East and play a home game this Friday night. And as long as they win, they should at least get two, maybe three games. So if you can support them, please go out and do that.
Commissioner Lovell?
Yes, last Friday, I had the pleasure of sitting in on the last day of some CIT training. CIT is Crisis Intervention Teams, and it's a training that gives law enforcement officers more tools to do their jobs safely and effectively. It was a week-long course that was held at the Emergency Service Training Facility at the old airport. There were officers from the city, the county, and Greensboro. I was able to share some words of encouragement on behalf of the county at the graduation. It was, it was fun. And then JCPC met last month, and we learned some sad news that Ms. Pam Glover accepted a position with the state, which removes her ability to serve as chair on that board. So she stepped down at the end of this month, and they're filling her position, but I trust that they will do it well, and whoever steps in will be prepared and ready to take over.
And she's coming to our next meeting. You know, I think we've discussed with the chairman to do a resolution to present to her for her years of service.
Great, that's good. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Connect?
Hope everybody had a safe Halloween. And also give a shout since we're doing sports. Grace Christian, well, soccer, state soccer champs, that's good.
That's cool. Commissioner Carver?
I think the only comment I'd like to make is relative to this discussion we just had, the, the paradigm where we go and ask people to give us information on areas that we would like them to promote is a lot better than educating them on the things that we want to do because of our hard work and trying to decide what's right, et cetera. I guess that's the issue of thinking outside the box. And it seems to me that a lot of municipalities and counties have already done some of this thing, some of this stuff, and they've been quite gratified at some of the proposals that they've received. So in the idea of moving toward trying to educate and then solicit information rather than try to sell what we might want to do to them, might be a good paradigm to approach this with. The other issue is that the people that come here and make public comments, et cetera, are a particular type of person, and they feel comfortable in a venue like this. We might have to stimulate some conversation in venues that aren't typical for what we do. We've got money here that we'll probably not see again in our lifetime for kinds of projects. And I'm just wondering whether or not we can't stimulate some meaningful conversation on the part of, of our community that might make a difference. Anyway, I, I guess, the bottom line, from, from my way of thinking, is when I look at some of the people and the initiatives they've already taken and the, and the progress that they've made in this arena, I think we can do the same thing. We, we have very capable people in our community that would have some opinions that I think would make a difference. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovell, I do want to say thank you for filling in on CIT. I had to go to the North Carolina Association County Commission's Board Meeting up in Greensboro, so thank you for filling in. For your information, the Triangle South Workforce Development Board is working to proceed to get Central Carolina Community College out of the administration management of the Workforce Development Board. And it goes in line with what the Department of Commerce at the state level wishes for the reduction of the number of workforce development boards. As it is, Sampson and Harnett County will be aligning with the Mid-Carolina Cog as they are the ones running the program for Cumberland County. Chatham County and Lee County are trying to link up with the Capital Area Workforce Development Board, and we're in that process as we speak. We are also working on creating a county youth council with Mayor Pro Tem Buckles, Dr. Stone, young commissioners. We also have Millicent Williams coming from the state in our next meeting coming up next week, and we will be working forward or moving forward with that project. And that was instigated by one of our county commission, young commissioners, and two by Pam Glover. So it's all come together with the initiation of that. As I said, I attended the North Carolina Association County Commission Board of Directors that I found out I was part of a few months prior. The meeting last weekend, and basically the topic of interest was the rebuilding of the local government center that unfortunately burned or was damaged due to the fire that happened in downtown Raleigh. So we're in discussions with the government, the municipal government commission, local?
League of Municipalities.
League of Municipalities, thank you. And there's a little discussion about property ownership and such. Commissioner Carver and I attended the Resource to Resource Conference. It was hosted by the Dr. Crystal MacGyver with the 180 Connect. And while there, I saw or heard from And while there, I saw or heard from potential recipients of possible opioid settlement funds in the treatment and the education of individuals. So, uh, more to follow on that. Uh, we had the Triangle J Council of Government Summit the other day, and I had the opportunity to visit one of our private Christian schools and looking forward to moving on to the others. Uh, one of the reasons I'm visiting our charter schools, our high schools, our commission, our Christian schools, private schools, is that I'm letting them know that we're going to be coming to them looking for, uh, two of their youth to be part of the youth council. So, we're working across the board on that. With that, I have nothing further. I want to say thank you for the staff, for the report on that ARPA program, and we will have fun with that, no doubt.
Motion adjourned.
Motion's been made for adjournment. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you.
...